Is that all it's gonna say now? Okay, good morning. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order on this Monday, September the 20th at 9:00 a.m. And before the more the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols, if you will.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, the board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on board docs, which the link can be found on our website, calbright.org, under About, Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q&amp;A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, would you please call the role?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Darius Anderson.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Joshua Elizondo.
Here.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correa. Jelena Grande.
Here.
Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Kevin Hull.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Irma Ogwenn. Jennifer Perry.
Here.
Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Roy Chabazian.
Here.
Valerie Shaw.
Here.
Julia Tarasova.
Here.
Bloss Villalobos.
Here.
And Joseph Williams.
Here.
Thank you. Well, we almost have a full house, you guys. The governor has has made appointments, and so I want to take a moment to welcome Joshua Elizondo. He is our student trustee. Irma Ogwenn. She's from the Central Valley. Welcome. We're glad to have you. And we also have, as our faculty representative, Roy Chabazian. So again, I want to thank you and and welcome you. The first order of business is to have the pledge of allegiance, and I would like our new student trustee Joshua Elizondo to lead us in that, if you don't mind, Joshua.
Yeah, and just one correction. It's Elizondo.
Oh, sorry.
No worries, no worries. Okay, so I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Um, this is the place where I asked if there's any changes to the order of the agenda. And if I see none, then we're going to move forward. I don't see anyone, and I certainly don't have any any addendums to it. My, um, my president's report is going to allow just a couple of minutes for each of our new board members to introduce themselves to us, and then I will have a couple of quick remarks. So I want to start with our our student trustee, Joshua.
No changes.
I'm sorry, Joshua? Oh, no, no, no. I wanted you to just introduce yourself to
Oh, I'm sorry.
your colleagues.
Um, hi, my name is Joshua Elizondo. Um, I am a student at Santa Monica College. I've been there since 2017. I'm originally from Detroit, Michigan, but I moved out to Los Angeles in 2014. I did go to Los Angeles City College for a little bit and West Valley College. So I've been in the CC for a little while. Last year, I was student trustee for Santa Monica College and also the statewide student trustee for the California Community College Trustee Board. And now I'm here and student government president at Santa Monica College this year. Outside of school, I do entertainment work. I also do nonprofit work in the foster care legislation world. I'm a former foster youth. And I really just like giving back and wanting to make a difference in the community. So looking forward to being around all of you and implementing change and making sure we're serving all of our students.
Thank you for that, Joshua. We're gonna go next to Roy Chabazian. Roy?
Thank you. I'm Roy Chabazian, and I work at Santa Ana College. For the past two years, I was the president of the academic senate there. And due to that, my my teaching load was was changed. And so while everyone learned how to do remote instruction a year ago, I'm learning that now, teaching statistics class.
Oh, welcome. And then Irma Ogwenn?
Hi, everybody. Irma Ogwenn. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Bitwise Industries, which is headquartered in Fresno, California. Our sort of stated mission is that we build tech economies in underestimated cities, which really translates to a ton of workforce and skills development for underrepresented and underestimated populations.
I'm glad you joined us. And I want to, on behalf of your colleagues on this Board of Trustees and the Board of Governors, I want to welcome you and thank you for your service. We need we need your sage advice. And so we're gonna, we welcome all of that and and hope that you really engage yourself with the issues that are in front of us. They're pertinent. And you, I know you have a lot to say. So again, thank you so much. With that, I'm going to turn to the next board agenda, which is the CEO report.
Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees. I noticed that you probably, like me, had to adjust our Zoom window this morning to get the right number of squares to display, since we're a larger group now. So I wanted to echoes echo Pam's warm welcome to the newly appointed members of the Board of Governors, Irma Ogwenn, Roy Chabazian, and Joshua Elizondo. And congratulations to Jennifer Perry and Blas Lee, those two on their designated reappointments. We at Team Calbright are looking forward to collaborating with you as we expand our operational capacity, engage in outreach across the state, and continue to build out the key infrastructure and personnel that are going to be necessary for us to support our students across Calbright's long-term success. And so now with our larger board in place, I'm also pleased to begin by reporting that Calbright and our faculty union, the Calbright Faculty Association, have reached a tentative agreement on an MOU regarding salary and evaluations. CFA was able to vote to ratify this MOU late last week, and it'll come before the board for consideration today. I wanted to especially thank CFA President Ashley Odell and all the members of both bargaining teams for their efforts as we're taking the next steps forward in our first union contract. Later this morning, we will also present to the board Calbright's Equal Opportunity Plan. This plan not only affects the hard work of the Calbright team, but also close attention to who we are as an institution. We were founded on the premise of equity, and we will continue to cultivate and promote a climate that advances respect, civility, anti-racism, and inclusion as a part of our commitment to educational excellence and to the people of the state. Already, nearly half of our faculty and staff identify as members of historically underrepresented populations. Fifty percent are women, roughly sixty percent of our student body identifies as Black, Latinx, or Native American. And we're at our best and closest to our mission when diverse voices across the college are able to come together to serve our students. I want to emphasize that while the Calbright team strives to reflect the diversity and the changing demographics of the state and to enroll a student body that does as well, this is work that's actually going to require our continued attention, commitment, and reevaluation in the in the months and years to come. And having this plan in place will really provide as an important guide for us in our ongoing equity efforts. In addition to our faculty and staff, a critical catalyst to delivering an inclusive program structure is the engagement that we do with our external partners. And as we've outlined in Calbright's strategic vision adopted by the board in the spring, we are working to deepen our work in high-need areas of the state. We recognize that building programs that meet the needs of both students and employers actually requires close listening and collaboration with workforce development boards, community-based organizations, advocacy and labor groups, and industry and community leaders. Later this morning, I'm actually thrilled to to share that two of our partners will join us to highlight the importance of deepening our engagement in places like Fresno and the Central Valley. Blake Konzel leads the Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board, and Sujin Gatlinchaz serves as the Executive Director of California Competes. They are both really steeped in the current and future needs amongst communities that have been hardest hit by the pandemic. And I look, think we all look forward to hearing their perspectives regarding the challenges and opportunities presented in Fresno and the Central Valley, as well as across the state. I'm also excited to be engaged with them as we build from this kind of shared understanding to collectively surface new approaches and solutions that are designed to support economic advancement in the Central Valley. Through our, though our COVID numbers are now trending in the right direction, we are still seeing the kind of empty storefronts and restaurants and the physical and economic scars, especially that remain in areas of the state where we're experiencing that economic divide. We are focused on supporting those displaced workers whose shifts disappeared through defaults of their own and employers who are seeking to cultivate local talent and revitalize their communities, very much in the vein of nimbly acting upon the workforce training needs for regions like the Central Valley, like Inland Empire. These are things that are mission-critical for the state's long-term economic strength and areas where we feel we have a lot to to contribute. This is a vision shared by Californians up and down the state, and we know that it was reaffirmed last week as the results for the recall election were tallied. Governor Newsom, as many of you know, has been a steadfast advocate for Calbright and our mission. He's a champion for education, for economic equity, for environmental justice and public health, and for our efforts to combat the COVID-19 pandemic. Calbright's mission is rooted in the California ideal that opportunity in the state should be available to everyone who seeks it. And so we look forward to continuing this important work alongside the governor and his administration as we collectively support and advance an equitable recovery and ensure a more resilient and robust and connected future for the state. Lastly, I'd like to end on a personal note this morning and share my gratitude for Calbright's Chief Technology Officer, Ari Bader-Natal, who will transition out of his role at the end of the month. When, many of you know, when Ari first joined, Calbright was only an idea, or more so an idea paired with founding legislation and a lot of requirements. Calbright itself was yet to be ideated, and our programs were yet to be developed. And during his time leading the technology team, Ari really propelled the technical launch of the college. He laid the foundation for our infrastructure to ensure our ability to grow as we mature. He and his team are focused now on supporting seamless transition and are actively working across the college to ensure the proper handoffs and projects continue and the work moves forward unencumbered. As a part of this transition, we will launch a search for new technology leadership roles that are focused on the next stage of growth and scale for the college that are all built around our strategic vision. As for Ari's next chapter, it will probably come as no surprise to many of you that he's he's getting back to his roots and he is going to be stepping out to help bring to life a new venture again from the ground up. Ari has given Calbright such a strong start with that successful launch. And I personally will will miss him a lot because he's been such a wonderful leader, such a wonderful colleague, a partner in problem-solving, and an advocate for the college, which we know will continue even in his tenure post post Calbright. And I just wanted to personally convey my gratitude for his dedication and his focus and how far he's been able to take us.
So, thank you for your report, Ari. As Ajita said, you came on board when when Calbright was, we didn't even have a name Calbright at that point. It was just an idea, and it and we had legislation. And you almost single-handedly made things work. And I know I am indebted. I know this organization is indebted to you for keeping, keep the, keeping the boat upright and and then filling out all of those faces that we had no idea what we were talking about or what we were trying to. We, we had a vision because you helped us have that vision. And so on on behalf of my colleagues, and I think other, I have see at least one other hand up. I just want to thank you for your service and really wish you the very, very best. With that, I see that Tom has his hand up. Tom Epstein? Where are you, Tom?
I just wanted to add my acknowledgement for Ari Bader-Natal is a fantastic contributor to the success of Calbright. I mean, he was hired before the first CEO was hired. He stayed on through all the roughest times, had to assume kind of an acting CEO role for a while. And all the while, through all the tribulations that we had, the one thing that was always rock solid was the technology side of Calbright, and that is due to him and and the team that he built. And I just can't thank you enough. I know you were thrust into some positions that maybe you weren't entirely used to. And and you could have left at any time, you know, if, when you saw things got tough here, but you didn't. You stayed with us. And now you are leaving at a time when we're at our higher point and are able to absorb the incredible loss. All right, thank you so much. Wish you the best of luck.
Member Hall, I see your hand.
Thank you, President Haynes. Ari, I'm not gonna add anything other than President Haynes and Member Epstein both said it all. You've, as far as I'm concerned, you can get the Lifetime Achievement Award already for for your Calbright work. It's been phenomenal. I think but for you, I just don't know where Calbright would be right now. So thanks a million and best of luck to you.
So, Ari, if you just want to close this out, you're welcome to see a couple of words. I know you're the strong silent guy.
Well.
We've gotten the strong part, so please.
Okay. Well, thank you for giving me the opportunity to help play a role in building Calbright and and thank you for your support and your trust over these past few years. And and thank you for your ongoing commitment to and support for Calbright, for the college itself.
Thank you, Ari. Okay, we are now getting ready to go into closed session. The board will now move to closed session. The and the board is scheduled to discuss one item regarding public employment. The title is Chief Technology Officer and Director of Information Technology. The the time we're going to spend there is approximately forty-five minutes, just so that folks have an idea when we're planning to come back in. We have our lawyer on board. Have I said everything that's pertinent? Namita?
Yes.
Okay, good. For the new members, you need to go out of this particular Zoom, and there is a particular, there is another Zoom category that you click on to get into our closed session. So I'll see you on the other side. So, thank you. We have returned from closed session. The board did not take any actions in closed session. I should ask, is there any public comment on this item?
President Haynes, there is no public comment.
Thank you. So we are now going to move to our consent item section, which is section three of the agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from consent for discussion or for a separate vote? All right, then can I get a motion to approve the consent?
I'll move approval.
I hear Williams is moving, and who was the second? Can I get a second?
I jumped in as Rawlings.
Rawlings will second that. And can I get a roll call vote, please?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson. Darius Anderson. Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua Elizondo.
I'm abstaining.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hull.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis.
Aye.
Irma Ogwenn.
I'll abstain.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Chabazian.
Although yes, and if possible, note an abstention for the minutes.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
Bloss Villalobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
So moved, President Haynes.
Thank you. We're now going to move to our action items. The first one is 4.1, which is the addendum to the Professional Services Agreement for David M. Lewis Company. And presenting on this item will be Jeff Bell, Chief Financial and Administrative Officer. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam President, Vice President, and Trustees. On June 1st of this year, Calbright College and David M. Lewis Company entered into a $75,000 professional services agreement, which set forth services by the David L. Lewis Company through July 30th of this year. Due to unintended, unanticipated time it's taken to recruit and hire a full-time controller, executive director of finance by Calbright, we're required, the services we need and required additional services beyond what was originally contemplated at the time that the parties entered into agreement. We have recently expended the total value of the agreement that we went into with them at that time. Calbright and DLC wish to extend the term of the agreement through December 31st of this year and increase the total value of the agreement by additional $90,920 for a total agreement not to exceed $165,920. They have been providing exceptional service. DLC controllers, executive director of finance has been essential to the services and continued operations of our organization. Specifically, the individual that they have brought to our organization has been involved in numerous projects and hasn't had a direct hand ensuring that we've carried out accurately and been on track for a number of projects, including our fifty percent rule waiver request that we recently submitted, year enclosure, which we've been in the process of right now, and we're currently working with our external auditors on, and our final budget. The incumbent who's been working with us has been a key driver in getting many of these projects correct and has been spending considerable time and energy working with us on them. So in summary, the services that they're providing, that have been provided by DLC have been essential to the continued budgeting and development work here at Calbright. And while we do recognize this as an extension, it is recommended that the board approve this request. We stand by to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for board members to weigh in. Are there any questions regarding this item? I don't see any hands raised. So is there any public comment on this particular item?
President Haynes, there is no public comment on this item. But if we could go back to the former consent agenda, someone has typed in a question.
So I guess I need the dear. Okay, so should that question be read, or is that, is the person present that can ask the question?
It's anonymous attendee.
Okay, can you please advise?
Yeah, I think we need counsel advice, President, because it's it's not an agendized question that they're asking.
We can just have the question. Sorry.
Can we have the lawyer first? There were too many. Can we have the lawyer first?
I believe Namita had to hop off for, just for a personal emergency, and so maybe this is something we can follow up on so that we can do that appropriately.
And sorry, Cindy Smith is here, also counsel with with Calbright. We can, we can treat this as a public comment and and then follow up.
Okay, so this requires the reading of the question, but no response. Am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Okay. This is the question. It seems Calbright College is not in compliance with Title V, Section 56048, which is staffing. Without having an accessibility coordinator slash director, how do you plan to resolve this, and when will it be accomplished?
In this
and this was in reference, they're saying, to through item 3.2.
Perfect. Thanks so much. Okay. Um, so with that. No, we're not responding. Um, so, so with that, I will continue. There, there's no, there's no public comment on item 4.1, either from the board members or from the or from the, from the public. So can I get a roll call vote on this item?
Yes. Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua Elizondo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa. Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hull.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis.
Aye.
Irma Ogwenn.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Chabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw. Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
Bloss Villalobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
So moved, President Haynes.
Thank you. We're now moving to item 4.2, which is the Purchasing Card Program, issuance of a Cal card to Chief Financial and Administrative Officer. Jeff Bell is presenting on this item.
Yes, thank you again, Madam President, Vice President, and Trustees. Back in June 17 of 2020, the Executive Committee of the Board authorized Calbright to participate in the Cal Card Program, credit card program, which authorized and at the same time authorized use of one card pending the development of a credit card policy, which was issued to our Chief Technology Officer, which we've been talking about this morning for some time because he is transitioning to a different job in a different area outside of Calbright. The credit card policies are still in development, but we anticipate bringing them to you at our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Executive Committee in October. However, the current cardholder, Ari, is departing Calbright, and as such, there's a business need for a new cardholder. The attached resolution, which will be before you, will approve and authorize a single additional Cal card for the use of myself, your CFAO, on behalf of the college. The attached resolution also anticipates the board will consider a resolution to authorize additional cardholders in the future. It is our intent that anything of this nature would be brought before the board, would be prudent, responsible, and extremely limited in nature. And in summary, we are recommending the board approve And in summary, we are recommending the board approve this resolution to approve an additional Cal card, given that Ari is leaving at this time. And there will be one card, again in summary, while the board will, the Executive Committee will review a card policy at its meeting in October. I stand by to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any trustee discussion? I see Member Hall?
Yeah, why is this even a board issue? Why is the board voting on a credit card issue? It was a policy that was brought before you before in June of last year, and so we need to come back to you because this was something that the board authorized. So we need to make sure that since that's something that the board has authorized as a credit card policy, we make sure we come back to you and say, hey, this is something that you have authorized as our board. We're telling you, we're proposing the change to something that you have authorized as our policy proposal. We need to bring that proposal back to you and have you authorize that proposal, which we will bring back to you. But you authorized one card at that time. And we cannot just go out and start authorizing additional cards because you've not given us that authority. And we need to make sure that we bring that back to you to make sure we have the authority to do as such, because you are...
I'll just jump in for one second, just to... Just to clarify two things. One is, I think this is just for continuity. The policies themselves that the board had asked us to look at are in draft form, and they'll be completed for next month's meeting, and we'll bring the resolution on the credit card policy. When the board had originally made that decision very prudently, it was to ensure that there were policies in place prior to the issuance of any kind of multiple cards or for other parts of the organization. So while we want to take this action in this board meeting to ensure continuity and operations, we will bring forward to the next board the set of policies that will be broader in nature and specific in nature in terms of the actual policies governing credit card use.
Other questions? I don't see any hands up from our board members. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. Then can I get a motion to approve?
Also move.
Perry moves. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Aguinaldo, seconds. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua L. Izondo. Tom. Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis.
Aye.
Irma Ogwenn.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 4.3, which is the RFP for Instructional Design. Marissa Bold, who is our Chief Program, Chief of Program Operations. Melissa, Marissa?
Hi, thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Board of Trustees. I would like to present to you an instructional design professional services agreement for your approval. This agreement is being presented for one of the two selected vendors following a request for proposal or RFP process. This agreement provides needed professional services for the college while we're building many new instructional courses and pathways. The Cross-Functional Evaluation Committee included representation from faculty, subject matter experts, and others across the instruction success and technology teams. And after a multi-phased process, two vendors, MPS and O'Donnell Learn, received the highest scores and were found to be the best fit for Calbright's needs. As a result, the evaluation committee recommended a split award to MPS and O'Donnell Learn for contract award. Calbright continues to engage in contract negotiations with MPS, and we hope to bring an agreement forward for consideration at the board meeting next month. This month, we're bringing forward O'Donnell Learn. So Calbright has negotiated terms with O'Donnell Learn, and we present this professional services agreement to the board for review and approval today. The agreement is for one year, and the total value is for up to $290,000. I welcome any questions.
I see Member Grande's hand up.
Thank you, Marissa, for the information on this RFP. Could you possibly elaborate on how these two contracts, once the second one is negotiated, will overlap and how they will be distinguished?
Sure, absolutely. So we have many courses and pathways to build, and so our anticipations that we would work, they wouldn't need to work hand in hand. We would work with one on a set of courses and pathways and another on a different set of courses and pathways. And that would, depending on their different expertise or availability and how our work is going with them, they may be different, better fit for one or the other. And so we're really excited and hope if we can get, if we have another one, we're able to bring you next month, to be able to learn from working with two different instructional design firms. But it wouldn't be a complex coordination. Each one would be its own set of courses and pathways.
I personally love this idea of having more than one provider of these services. So thank you very much for considering the award to two separate instructional design companies.
Thank you, Member Grande. I'm with you. I think this is exciting. Member Rawlings?
Thank you for this. I agree. I like the two different companies and kind of learning from both. And that drives me to a second question, which is, how are we institutionalizing or planning to institutionalize instructional design? Yeah, I know a lot of institutions have separate instructional designers helping support our faculty, but I was just wondering, as we learn these things from these two companies, how are we planning on institutionalizing the work?
So, A, I love the question, and it's probably an even bigger one. We do have a couple of things. One, we have a faculty role approved by the board already around instructional design. We are also, so that is one way over time. As we said, this isn't a replacement for our hiring needs, but a complement too. We also are working closely with both internal and external subject matter experts throughout, and we are working on documenting throughout the process even more our, say, assessment design principles, our program design process. And we can do the same for instructional design in terms of what helps us deliver the best CBE experience, online CBE experience for our adult working learner target population as well. And so we have many ways that we're thinking about it, but can also amplify that as well.
Very exciting. Thanks.
Are there any other questions from our board members? I don't see any other hands raised. I just want to add to this. This position of instructional design is becoming critically important. And I'm hoping that this is, and I'm looking forward to this not being an add-on, but that this is integrated into the even beginning questions about curriculum and then how one should look at it. And that these folks have value added relative to the design of curriculum as well. And it's better to be on the forefront of that as opposed to be brought in toward the end of that process. And I think it lends itself to the breaking down of silos. Because what is critically important is about the integration of the work we're doing, whether it's the student experience or whether it's the design, the instructional design, or whether it's the curriculum. We all need to be at the same table. We need to build a bigger table and all be at the same table in service to the end result, which is successful outcomes. And successful outcomes means for our adult learners, that they get the job that they want, that their pathway is smooth and hopefully eventless, and that they can move through this and get into the career that they so desire. So I think that this is a wonderful addition to the work that has to happen. So with that, and I don't see any more hands raised, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Rawlings to approve, and who's the second? I'm sorry.
Tarasova.
Tarasova, seconds. Can I get a roll call, please?
President Haynes, I just wanted to say there was no public comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Public, please speak up if there is public comment.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua L. Izondo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis.
Aye.
Irma Ogwenn.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you very much. Our next board item is 4.4, which is the Memoranda of Understanding with the California Faculty Association, and we have Marissa Bold, who will be presenting on this item.
I thank you again, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Board of Trustees. I would like to present to you for ratification two Memoranda of Understanding, or MOUs, between Calbright College and the Calbright Faculty Association, or CFA. The CFA, as you know, is the exclusive bargaining representative of all full-time faculty at Calbright. Calbright and the CFA are engaged in a collaborative, interest-based bargaining process to establish the first collective bargaining agreement. While negotiating the full agreement, the parties recognize the need to provide an opportunity for a salary increase and academic evaluations. So Calbright and the CFA have come to agreement on an MOU that provides for a 5% one-time off-schedule lump sum salary increase for all full-time faculty, as well as other opportunities for stipends and compensation, such as a $2,500 stipend for special projects that are rooted in Calbright's strategic vision and student success. The MOU also establishes an evaluation system to assist its full-time faculty to professionally develop in the areas of competency-based education and provide supports as needed. The term of this MOU is for the 2021-2022 academic year from July 1 of 2021 through June 30 of 2022. Calbright and the CFA also agreed to a second MOU whereby full-time faculty shall receive 12 sick days per academic year rather than 10 as initially offered in the offer letters, and this agreement is retroactive to July 1 of 2021. We present both of these MOUs to the board for review and ratification today, and I welcome any questions.
I see Member Grande and Vice President Costa.
Thank you once again, Marissa, for this information, and I want to applaud the efforts that Calbright administration has made towards working with our faculty representatives on this initial MOU. It is quite an accomplishment for Calbright. It's exciting to see. And I will tell you, it contains some areas that I have never seen before, which is really exciting. The one in particular that I'd like to ask about, and only looking for a little bit more clarity on how this would roll out, is in regard to the tenure-track faculty evaluation committee composition that includes a tenured faculty area specialist from a public community college using competency-based education that has been selected by the dean or the deans designate. I know that's an awful lot, but can I get an idea as to how this is going to roll out? What will this look like?
Absolutely. And I do just want to say too, we've been so appreciative of the collaborative and interest-based bargaining process, and so have come to this together with our CFA participants and with our representatives for the college. And so I really appreciated being a part of the process. And for this, the intention here was because we have tenure-track faculty, but we don't yet have tenured faculty, to be able to have that tenured faculty voice, who's an expert in CBE. And so we have identified multiple other potential college, community colleges that have expertise in CBE and can be partners with us. And so we are working on establishing those relationships. We wanted this in place first before we put that in place. I believe LA Trade Tech is one, and some others that we are looking at. And it may need to be outside of California, but we're looking at all public institutions, all part of a union and with tenure faculty to bring that expertise and complementary perspective to the conversations that happen as part of the process.
What an amazing opportunity for our faculty at Calbright to learn from the expertise that has already accumulated in the field. Again, kudos to really thinking outside of the box on ways to make this even better. I am looking forward to it.
Thank you for that. We had a hand raised by our VP. Do you still have a question?
Yeah, I do, Pam, if that's okay. I have a question and a comment. I just want to echo what my colleague, Board Member Grande, said. You know, the enabling statute of Calbright always recognized the importance of her faculty. So I just want to give kudos to our labor partners and Calbright staff for bringing forward this for our approval. It really is a milestone, in my opinion, in Calbright. My question is, of course, about the money. So I'm wondering what the total cost is for the provisions, as Marissa you outlined in your presentation.
Jeff, I know we calculated that before. I don't know if you have that on hand. If not, we can follow up with the exact cost implication of it as well.
So is Jeff still on the call? Yes. You're on mute. Jeff, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm unmuted. Yes, we'll follow up with calculations for you, Amy, and get you a good calculation for that.
And I would say in the future, it's always helpful to have that information. Some of these changes are incremental, and it's really helpful to know what that incremental cost is. And so I would just always include that in what you're telling us, and even in your presentation, so that we know as a board what we're paying for and how much it is.
We'll take that note and comply going forward.
I appreciate that. And so, Member Rawlings, your hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. So congratulations to both teams on this. I've done interest-based bargaining for a couple of decades now, and know it can be a little bit of a lengthy process, but it definitely is a trust-building process. So I'm glad that we have our first MOUs and everything that are a belt on it. My question comment about the agreements revolves around evaluations, and I was taking a look, and I just saw a reference to diversity in the evaluations MOU. And I know that the instrument isn't created, the metrics and the instrument itself aren't created yet. As you do that, I would recommend that, working with the Chancellor's Office if you haven't already, because the Diversity Equity Inclusion implementation teams have a tenure and evaluations subgroup, which I am a part of, and we have some really outstanding recommendations for sample metrics that can be used that might exploit the creation of the diversity metrics in your tool.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Member Hall?
Thank you, President Haynes. My question is, what provoked the increase from 10 sick days up to 12 days, if I heard that right? And then is a sick pay a use it or lose it, or do you build it up year after year?
Right. So I will do my best without our... Right. So I will do my, do my best with, without our, our legal team for, who was related to this on the call, but um. The twelve actually matches what other um employees at Calbright get. And so initially, I think it was done based on ed code, but in, for that equity across the college and uh really. Um excited to support our faculty in that, that's, that is now consistent across the college that um everybody will have those twelve days. Um, and then. Trusty Hall, remind me of your second question.
Yeah, I, i- is it use it or lose it?
Use it or lose it, yes.
Build sick days up over the years.
Yeah. So my understanding is that it is not use it or lose it. You do get to um build those up over the years.
Okay. So i- is, is there a cost component with that that can be calculated to when, when you increase from ten to twelve?
So I don't, I don't want to miss because we will, we will look into that, but I also, I don't know that that is held in the same way as an unfunded liability in the same way that. Um, other types of days or in other types of sectors that that is held, but so we'll look into that to make sure. That um we can respond to that accordingly too.
If I can, generally, um Kevin, sick days are not, you can't cash them out at the end. So you know, if somebody were to leave our employment, um unlike vacation, you know, the sick just rolls off. There's no cash component to it.
Oh, I see. So, so when we say use it or lose it, if, if you don't use it.
It just goes.
It just goes away. Okay.
You, you can, you can leave it. You just, you can't, you can't take it with you.
I see. That, that answered my question. Thank you.
That's for most agencies, for most agencies.
Thank you.
Uh, member Epstein.
Thanks. Um, someone who's not intimately familiar with uh collective bargaining and education, um, how does this? Contract compare to your typical community college? Schedule?
So again, I, I will defer to others, but in this, in this case, given that we are doing the MOU just as a one-year. I think once we have the full contract, that's where we'll be able to see what that comparison looks like, where we'll be looking at a salary schedule and. Um, any number of those other things. But in coming to these numbers, we did look at. Many other sister community colleges um within the state to think about comparable numbers and um. What those schedules do look like to inform this. But I think we'll have a lo- a lot more to say on that when we have the full contract where we've, we've gone through each of the articles. Um, but I welcome any, anyone else's perspective on that, too.
Any other questions from our board members? All right, then, um, is there any um public comment on this item?
President Haines, there is no public comment.
Alrighty, um, then can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
So who was the, who was the motioner?
Uh, Costa and then Anderson got the second.
Costa and then Anderson gets the second.
For once, I beat Bill. That's like impossible. He's not.
I, I, I know, I know. Um, can we call the roll, please?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Yes.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua Elizondo. Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hull.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis.
Aye.
Irma Ogwenn.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Yes.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haines.
Thank you so much. Um, we're on our last um uh uh action item, which is four point five. The um equal employment opportunity plan and we have Tamika Connor. Senior Vice President of Strategic Initiatives. Presenting.
Thank you. Thank you, President Haines and Vice President Costa and the Board of Trustees. Um, I am happy to present uh to the Board of Trustees. Uh for approval of Calbright's initial equal employment opportunity plan. The purpose of our EEO plan is to address the requirements of California Education Code eight, seven, one, zero, six, B. For compliance with the Board of Governors' regulations on equal employment opportunity hiring. And state and federal non-discrimination statutes. And for guidelines in improving the equality of employment opportunities. The plan reflects the college mission, which states. Calbright College is committed to increasing economic mobility. And closing equity gaps for working adults who lack easy access to traditional forms of higher education. We offer online flexible, affordable, skills-based programs that provide tangible. Economic value for both working adults and hiring managers. The following board policies also relate to our plan, which is Board Policy thirty-four, ten, non-discrimination. Thirty-four, thirty, prohibition of harassment and thirty-four, forty, complaint, complaint process. The plan also aligns with our commitment and solidarity with our sister districts. To the Board of Governors' DEI resolution, which Calbright's Board of Trustees passed June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Affirming the college commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion. The resolution outlines strong support for diversity in faculty and staff hiring. As well as diversity among students and administrators. And expects everyone at Calbright, in the Calbright College community. Through their roles and responsibilities to implement Calbright's diversity initiatives. And maintain a climate of respect, civility, anti-racism and inclusion. As part of the institution's commitment to educational excellence. Calbright's Equal Employment Opportunity Plan is the framework. That will be used to develop policies and services to promote equal employment opportunity. And foster the values of inclusion and diversity. The plan highlights Calbright's EEO initiatives such as. Conducting diversity dialogues, forums and cross, cross-cultural workshops for faculty, staff and administrators. Highlighting the college's equal employment opportunity and diversity policies. And job announcements and its recruitment, marketing and other publications. It also includes in job announcement language um indicating that. Candidates are required to demonstrate that they can infuse diversity in their major job duties. The plan also reviews the college's mission statement annually, publications and other marketing tools. To ensure it reflects the institution's commitment to equity. We also maintain an equal employment opportunity online presence. On the college's website by highlighting the district's diversity. And equity employment opportunity, ADA, sexual harassment and non-discrimination policies. We also seek direct contact with organizations that represent the diverse community in which we serve. These organizations can also serve its resources for referring potential diverse candidates. The plan also demonstrates the college's collective effort to build a diverse workforce. That is reflective of its adult learners with fifty-seven percent female and forty-eight percent underrepresented employees. So I asked the board today to approve our initial EEO plan. Thank you.
Thank, thank you um for that presentation. Um, I see hands raised from our board members. I'm going to start off with. Uh, member Shabazian and then uh followed by uh member Rawlings and then member Tarasova.
Members. Thank you. I just wanted to highlight and commend a couple of sections emphasizing the recruitment process and making sure that. Uh, word is getting out to diverse pools of candidates. Uh, and then also just wanted to highlight this concept of a. Review of the initial applicant pool, uh, looking at the diversity of that. Uh, and then some further steps, uh, if needed to ensure that we've got uh a robust diverse pool of applicants. So thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mike, thank you. Um, so a couple of comments for me. One, uh, the training for selection committees. I always strongly support everyone that serves on uh selection committees to have the EEO training. Uh, this is all our responsibility, all employees' responsibility to make sure that we're uh, you know. Fall under EEO rules, but then also really taking a, a look at hiring from um the, the diverse and in- inclusive backgrounds. Um, that to me also leads to when we do the uh cross-cultural trainings. That we make sure that we are uh not forgetting about those with different uh abilities. Um, and that we, we take that group into account as well when we do some of this training.
Yes. Member Tarasova.
Thank you, Tamika, for your presentation today. Uh, as of lately, there has been a lot of conversations around equal employment opportunity. And how diverse faculty and staff directly is detrimental to the student's success. And upon the review, I was happy to find that the students are included in the EEO Advisory Committee. So I would like to applaud the President Manon and staff for always designing with a student in mind. The language right now specifies that the EEO Advisory Committee. Shall be comprised of at least two faculty, two administrators, three classified confidential. And student representation. If possible, I would like to request to specify the number. Of students to being at least one student as a part of the advisory committee. To ensure that it matches the general language that describes the composition of the committee.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, member Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, President Haines. Um, just a couple of comments. Um, one is that I had the pleasure of serving, I have the pleasure of serving on the um. System-wide EEO uh and diversity advisory committee. And as part of that work, we had the pleasure of reading multiple EEO plans from different schools, just to get the. General feeling of what these EEO plans look like. And I'm so pleased that the one that Calbright has designed is so comprehensive and so detailed. And really could um be in the forefront of what these EEO plans look like. So I look forward to this being a, a living document. Hopefully, if we learn more breadth practices, it could be incorporated here, but. It really is um a wonderful plan. So that's my, my first comment. The second comment is that I'm, I'm giving myself a lot of credit for being on the same wavelength as Bill Rawlings. Um, he's owned into the training piece and I think that's critical as well. So I'd love to hear more about that training pieces as you guys continue your work on here. And then my last and final note is just a, a question on your vocabulary. Um, I noticed that in the definition section. There is a definition for the term ethnic minority and I would love for us to stray away from the use of the term minority. Um, if it's possible to find another, another uh vocabulary term, um, please do. And because of my uh techno- technological ineptitude, I can't really. Search for the places that it's used, but if we could replace that word, I think that would not only be uh more accurate, but also respectful.
Yes, we'll do. Thank you.
Uh, member Epstein.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I just want to show off that I have actually read everything because I found what I think is an extremely minor typo. At the bottom of page thirteen, where it says BP thirty-four, thirty, it says probation of harassment. And that seems.
Yeah.
Like it should be something else.
Prohibition.
Yeah, British.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Um, I, I, I still, uh, uh, member Tarasova, do you have another question? Okay, if you, um, and before you go to it, um, member Aguinaldo, did you get all of your questions out? Okay.
I did. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Then member Tarasova.
Uh, as I was reading into it, I forgot to ask my other question and uh the training specifically says that the. Uh, selection committee must receive training within two years prior to the EEO service. And considering that students might be involved in the selection committee. How would that be possible for students to ensure that they are part of the process, but did not receive the training in two years prior to that?
So uh, anybody who participates in the committee will go through the training, so that there's a regular order of training that we'll provide, but. Um, we, we require anybody participating in the committee to go through the training. So the training is asynchronous as well. Um, it's not just a, um, so there's, there's an opportunity for a student to, to be trained and prepared and ready to go to, uh, to serve in that capacity.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Um, I don't see any other hands raised. Um, are there, um, is there a public um comment?
President Haines, there is no public comment.
All right, then. Um, then can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, is that Shabazian who's moving to approve? All right, can I get a second, please?
Second by Tarasova.
Uh, second by uh Tarasova. Uh, would you please recall the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Joshua Elizondo.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correo.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hull.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis.
Aye.
Irma Ogwenn.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Roy Shabazian.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haines.
So thank you very much. We are now in the information and reports section of our agenda. Um, five point one is the regional and statewide engagement partnership update. And we have um around Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board. And the Calif- and California competes. And so we have Jenny Johnson, who is our Vice President of Government Relations, presenting. And she will, she'll, and we have other presenters, but I'll allow her to introduce those.
Great. Good morning, President Haines, Vice President Costa and Trustees, Jenny Johnson, Vice President of Government Relations. It's wonderful to join you this morning and oh, again, a warm welcome to our newest Board of Trustees. It's my pleasure to present on item five point one, addressing regional and statewide engagement partners update. As President Menon shared earlier, we are actively focused on collaborating with regional leaders, addressing workforce development in their respective communities. As we know, California is a large state. With me today are two such leaders. I'd first like to introduce you to Blake Consol, who serves as the Executive Director of the Fresno Regional. Workforce Development Board and Dr. Sujin Gatlin-Jazz, who serves as the Director, Executive Director of California Competes. You'll hear from Blake first, followed by Sujin, and afterwards, we'll have an opportunity to answer any questions. So with that, Blake, I'll kick it over to you.
Uh, thank you so much and thank you for having us today. Um, we were uh fortunate at the, let me take a step back. The Fresno Regional Workforce Development Board is a joint powers authority between the city of Fresno and the county of Fresno. And we're one of uh thirty-seven workforce boards that exist in the state of California. In most instances, those boards run along county lines. In some rural areas, multiple counties will group together to form a single board. I think. The fifteen northernmost counties in our state are in a single board. And then in more populous counties, say like Los Angeles, there are actually eight separate workforce boards. Many of them aligned with uh municipal boundaries. So um, and we receive our funding from the US Department of Labor. To uh retrain unemployed workers or what's an even bigger problem here in Fresno County, underemployed workers. Those would be people who are working multiple part-time jobs. Those would be people who are working multiple part-time jobs in an effort to equate a full-time salary. Our preference is always to work with public education partners. It's more cost-effective. In frankness, exempting Calbright and some of our local community colleges, it can be a bit taxing to work with those partners. Not so much about the content of what they provide, but the way in which they provide it, the timeframe, is it on a strict academic calendar? Are classes offered in the evening or on weekends where working people might be able to take them? You all have answered one of the biggest issues, and that are the classes offered online, which would, you know, someone could take it from their house as opposed to have to drive to a campus, get out of the car, park, and all that rigmarole. I think you're really poised to address a need that is prevalent throughout the state. I'm going to say that I think that many of the frustrations that we have as a workforce board are frustrations that are shared by the other 37 workforce boards I referenced, or 36, we would be 37. And workforce boards are only one source of funding, but we have a lot of money to spend on such training. Currently, not by federal law, but by state law, 30% of the funds that we spend towards adult clients, 30% of the gross amount of those funds that were given on an annual basis must be reserved for individual training accounts that can be used to fund training at institutions like Calbright, community colleges, private colleges. So it's a pressing issue. I know that in the in the project that we undertook last year, we were very pleased to be included. Had to do a lot of screening to find the right clients to take that training, Salesforce training and Salesforce Network training. But we're eager to try other areas with Calbright in the future. I should probably stop there because I could talk forever. And I know this is part of a montage presentation, so.
Thank you, Blake. That's very helpful. That's wonderful. And then next coming up, again, Sujin, I think is on the call with us as well.
Hi, good morning. I'm Sujin Jazz. I'm the Executive Director of California Competes. Thank you for having me here today. I am excited to speak with you about what we're seeing in the state's workforce development initiatives, where we need to go from here, and how Calbright can support our state's equitable recovery. First, let me share a little bit about California Competes. I know I've spoken with many of you during a Board of Governors meeting, but I know we have new members. We at California Competes, we aim to solve the state's thorny social and economic problems by conducting rigorous higher education and workforce policy research. We view higher education as both a vaccine and an antidote against economic stagnation and social stratification for individual Californians, our communities, and the state's economy. And we believe California's long-term economic growth will be accomplished through shared prosperity. California's community college system is a crucial asset in the state and frankly, our nation's workforce development strategy. Just in this year's, our state's Budget Act, major California Community College Workforce Development Initiatives totaled over $1 billion. Just focused on workforce, things like strong workforce, the California Apprenticeship Initiative, and I could go on. And I'm happy to talk more about this. I know we have limited time. And I will share in the chat after I finish some documents if you want to dig in. We have one that we prepared for the California Higher Education Policy Institute for Legislative Staff that talks about California's workforce development system, particularly the focus on higher ed's role. And I will send that over in chat. So these programs and funding streams are critical to supporting adult learners who don't fit the model of traditional, the traditional student in California's higher education system that that system was built for. But these older students are critical for the state, to meet its educational and workforce needs. And so I want to talk a little bit about some of the research that we've done. In our research, we looked to see, well, how many Californians need to be served or could be served? And we found that there are 6.8 million Californians ages 25 to 54 with a high school diploma, but no college degree. And I'll link that study too. I want to flag that it's really hard for us to underestimate the folks that have degrees or credentials that like Calbright would offer. We don't have great data systems yet, but with the launch of the credit-accredited system, hopefully will soon, but you'll hear me talk a lot about college degrees, not because we don't care about sub-baccalaureate credentials, just because we don't have the data on them. So this figure, the 6.8 million, should be, is large, it should be striking, and it's not evenly distributed across the state. And I'm going to do a screen share because seeing the data is also really striking. So you should be seeing now a blue heat map of California. And this is attainment across the state. So the darker regions are ones that have more of what we call potential graduates. California's untapped opportunity. So as you can see, in Imperial County, 71% of folks there do not have a college degree. And then you can see along the coasts in urban areas, we have much higher levels of degree attainment. We've also mapped on here, public post-secondary institutions in California, the UCCSU and community colleges. You could also see that our state's public colleges and universities are largely concentrated near the coast and in urban areas, far from where potential graduates live, except for those along the I-99 corridor in the San Joaquin Valley. But we know that many of those campuses are maxed out. So building pathways to college for these Californians left behind is critical. And unlike many headlines you may read, as I say, the importance of a college education is large and growing over time. The returns are getting bigger. And even in this pandemic, having a college education provided protection against the crisis. For example, almost all job losses came from workers with less than a bachelor's degree. Sadly, as I flagged, the data on college attainment isn't great, so we don't know around like, you know, sub-baccalaureate credentials. But we do know that having a post-secondary education matters. And this disproportionate impact of COVID may have driven an increased recognition by Californians around the value of higher education. So in another report, we looked at, we surveyed folks to understand during the pandemic, what's your intent to go to post-secondary education the next two years? What is the demand for higher ed? And not surprisingly, it's high. So I'm going to show, I'm going to flip to another heat map. Here we go. This is intent to enroll. So we found that of Californians 25 and older, 19% say they intend to enroll in higher ed in the next two years. That's 5.1 million Californians. And as you can see, the regional differences are striking. I can chat a link to this report too. We break it out by race, ethnicity, in addition to region, gender. We also ask what type of institution folks are interested in attending. And institutions like Calbright are very well positioned to provide, to address this huge demand. Of the 5.1 million Californians who want to pursue, who plan to pursue higher ed in the next two years, three out of four, which represent 3.9 million Californians, are interested in taking courses exclusively online. And the interest amongst those Californians is highest amongst women, among Latinx Californians, among individuals under 45, and those with household incomes under $75,000. We also asked in this survey, what sort of post-secondary institution you're interested in attending? And we found interest for community colleges was high. We also asked separately around vocational and technical, and that interest was also high. So across our research, we see that institutions with a focus on building workforce skills have the potential to nimbly respond to this ever, you know, California's ever-changing labor market, to upskill at scale and strengthen the talent pipeline needed for California's economic recovery. We at California Competes believes that Calbright's model of career-focused education and the focus on adult learners who have very different needs puts Calbright in a pivotal position to help California in its recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, Sujin. Thank you, Blake. Well, I wanted to make sure that we left. I know that's a lot right there, but we wanted, this is one example of one of the regions we're working with, and we want to do this on a regular basis to give you snapshots, if you will, about what's going on in our region. So if there are any questions, we'd like to make ourselves available to have a discussion or your questions.
Board members, I see member Grande.
Thank you, President Haynes, and thank you all very much for this presentation, especially the graphics that we just saw. They are very compelling. I was wondering if there happens to be an overlay of the state of California and where we're serving the greatest amount of people currently with Calbright's offerings and how they line up to the areas that were just demonstrated on the map regarding intent to enroll in higher education.
We could. You know, what we've used the demographic data that Sujin and others have have identified for us is in targeting our outreach efforts and resources. So the decisions that we made around, with the board around what regions to focus on, where need was the greatest, and where there might be a market of learners that could both benefit from Calbright, but also that have difficulty in accessing traditional forms of education, sort of the barrier to entry into the education market is too high. That's actually how and what has driven a lot of our regional focus strategy. And so what we're doing there is continuing to deepen our outreach, our marketing efforts, and our, and the learning opportunity, right? So the the representation of folks like Blake and others on the ground and deepening our work in relation with ongoing efforts on the ground there are very much about getting to that question of how we best square, not just where our current students are, but reach the markets of learners that we need to be reaching.
Member Anderson.
Thank you so much. And again, I love the graphic and the information. Quick question. In this survey, did we ask other questions? You know, is there a larger data file that some of us could go ahead and take a look at? You know, for example, people want to go back to higher education. Did you ask a follow-up of why? What was driving those questions? Or was there additional information? Yeah.
So not on that survey. We do have other data, survey data collected by folks at STRATA that looks at sort of perspectives on the value of the higher ed that we are writing up analysis around soon, and I will be sure that it makes it to your inbox since we have that ready.
Well, I just go to the Lieutenant Governors, you know, with our goals and hitting our goals, understanding what the benchmark is, what's driving their motivations, and then a year from now, figuring out if we're capturing their motivations, I think is going to be very important to see the onboarding process. And if we hit our goals, great. And if we don't, you know, where did we miss? So I think the more information we have, the better.
Absolutely. And we're, we're learning and documenting a lot that even in our current outreach and marketing efforts, so understanding sort of what are the messages that resonate in terms of the relationship that we want to build with different adult learner populations. We are also actually starting to develop, and we'll be able to share more detail as it evolves. Looking at this question around kind of how we leverage behavioral nudges and how we leverage the ability for us to effectively communicate in ways that are testable and responsive. So, you know, is the message that we are getting out there actually motivating people to take the next step or feeling like the next step is possible to enroll or to reach out to us or to fill out an interest form? And so a lot of that work we had done, especially in testing out different communications with students in different points of our funnel and our pipeline, and that work we're going to step up also over the next several months.
Here, obviously, you have to have multiple tracks, and one of them is described in the slides as people who are actually going for a degree, whether an associate's degree or then maybe transferring in to get a bachelor degree. And the community college system is fantastic. Our youngest went to Fresno City College and transferred into Humboldt as a junior, and it was perfect. I got him out of the house, and he knew what classes he had to take at Humboldt, so that was good. But I would say to you, you should have just as robust a track dealing with career technical education, especially from the standpoint of how does a working person take these classes if they're not offered in timeframes where they can? This is a, all of we with directors, it's a big, big issue. And to the extent that you're able to make that type of coursework available, you won't have to advertise anything. They'll be beating down your door because when it does become available in the right timeframes, we never have to, we usually end up buying cohorts of classes from our surrounding schools because we, you know, we have so many people who are interested in them. It's a, it's a really big problem. And I think you guys are so, you know, the COVID, if there's one minor silver lining, many of your colleagues at brick and mortar institutions were forced to get into the virtual world where we are right now on the Zoom call. Many of them are eager to run back into the ivory tower. Okay, you guys aren't in the ivory tower. You're out in the, you're in the ether with that, you know, the virtual stuff. So if you can, I mean, it's really, there's an opportunity here to serve a pressing need and to, you know, get the kudos and the funding associated with the kudos that you guys want.
I don't see any other board members hands up. But I do want to ask a question. And first, I want to thank Mr. Consol because we need to hear that. We say that among ourselves all the time, but we need to hear that from the field, and you're the field. You know what's happening in your own community and in your own region. My question actually goes to, and Sujin, you may be able to answer this question, and then Adita, please chime in. So it was very clear in the mapping of the intent to enroll relative to Imperial and the Inland Empire and San Joaquin. Those are high percentage numbers. But when you go up to the far north, those numbers are very small. And I'm wondering, I'm wondering, is that the result of just the lack of education, educational opportunities up there? Or is it married to the, what is offered in terms of careers, which may be narrower? And or is it also combined with the lack of knowledge of what can be offered online? I'd be interested in knowing what that may all be about, if any of those. So Sujin, do you have any thoughts about that?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's all of what you said. It's the, we know sort of a proximity to a brick and mortar campus increases someone's, you know, interest and likelihood to go to college, and there's not one around there. The labor market returns are likely less. One of our council members, Carl Cohen, when he used to run the state agency, I forget the name, but when he went to go visit far north, there are many communities where the best job was being a prison guard. And, you know, going to college and, you know, being in your community, you're not going to get a better job, and you don't need a college degree for that. So, you know, there's a realization where in some parts of the state, getting a college degree may not have the labor market outcomes that it does in other parts of the state. So there's a need around economic development for those regions. But so there are other reasons that a college degree is valuable besides the labor market returns. You know, I focused on that because it's accountable problem. We have data for it. So those are, those are two good reasons. Another good reason is we try and bridge the access gap when you're not near a college with online. But clearly, there's, there's big broadband disparities in broadband access, particularly in rural regions, not say in urban regions also. But so online oftentimes is not a feasible alternative. So there's just not online, not brick and mortar, labor market outcomes aren't as clear. So it's all of those combined.
Thank, thank you.
I would, I would add absolutely all those things, and I would add, I think it actually requires like a different specialized strategy. So the thing that we are also learning about some of the rural states, particularly in the northern part of the state, is that there's not actually a strong desire to to economically diversify in some of the ways that the urban centers do, you know, attracting a warehouse delivery center or whatever the case may be. And so we're also finding these instances where we are learning more about what those areas have to offer in terms of community assets and how, you know, particular types of skills could be basically leverage their ability to um, to connect to the market differently. And so a good example of this in the north was a conversation uh, in an agricultural part with uh, an assembly member who um, who identified to us that um, for them, it wasn't, it wasn't ag tech like we thought it might be. It was actually uh, understanding how to bring global market, markets to um, products to global markets, right? It, it was a connection from the rural area to uh, a larger um sort of e-commerce environment. And so um, those kinds of things become really important for us to think about. If we were programmatically serving an area that was disconnected in particular ways, what are the conditions that we need to be able to meet in for, in order for that opportunity to be actually accessible? And, and I, I do want to underscore, you know, we've been very supportive of the expansion of the broadband policies as a number of us have, but also uh, the ability for us to connect device access, including not just the, the, the sort of Chromebook or laptop, but also the, the hotspot. And we found uh, especially in our work with our rural sister colleges at the start of the pandemic, where we were able to extend some of our resources to provide device lending access, that connectivity uh, and device access became an important part of their ability to continue their education uh, at, at some of those regional institutions and also important lesson for us in understanding uh how to better serve rural markets.
Thank you for, for those um observations. Um, is there any, I don't see any more hands raised by our, our board members. Is there any public comment on this item?
President Haynes, there is no public comment.
Okay, well, this is not an action item. It's a, uh, informational report. Thank you so much um, for the presentations. Really appreciate it. Uh, our next item is five point two, which is reports on contracts and purchases. Uh, Jeff Bell's going to be presenting.
Thank you, Madam President, Vice President and Trustees. Uh, this item has your um contracts. It's the, the contracts executed in August of this year. Uh, it has three term extensions, one addendum and nine new contracts for a total of six hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. It also has the purchases that were executed through the, through the month. Uh, the purchases are, as, as you've seen typically can uh, throughout each month, the highest amount being in the area of telecommunications. So we're told about forty thousand dollars and other operating expenses, the largest being in coding sections and CDW miscellaneous for a total of eighty-two thousand dollars. Standing by for any questions.
Uh, thank you. Um, are there any questions from our board members? I don't see any hands raised. Is there any public comment on this item?
President Haynes, there is no public comment.
All right, then, um, then the next um areas for um uh will be our constituency group reports, and we have um six point one, which is the Calbright Academic Senate Report. And I saw Michael Stewart. Um, so Michael. It's your.
How are you?
Fine, thank you.
Great, great. Uh, and hello, uh, Vice President Costa and fellow board members. As President Haynes stated, my name is Michael Stewart. I'm the president of the Academic Senate. And I'm actually here just to give you some information, not a huge report, but uh, some celebratory information. Um, as you guys know, we've submitted our application to the ASCC. And during their uh, board member meeting during the ninth through the eleventh of this month, the ASCC Executive Committee voted to approve the membership of the Calbright Academic Senate. Right? Yay to all of us, not just the faculty and the AS, but this board, the students and everyone else, because this is a great success for our college. And this means that we are now recognized and we will have a seat at the table. We will be in Area A. I have my first meeting with the ASCC President on Wednesday. A meet and greet. She would like to reach out and meet us. And we will be attending the president's meeting on November, in November. So I'm gonna head down to Long Beach. I figured I could either do it virtually or in person, but I want them to see the face, meet the face, shake the hand of the face of Academic Senate President. So just wanted to give you guys that great bit of information about where the AS is sitting right now, and we are recognized and we are official.
Thank you so much. And um, I see a, a hand from um, uh, member Hall.
Real basic question, what, what's Area A as opposed to Area B, C, or D?
Regional.
Well, there you go. There's four areas that are broken out into the state of California. Northern California, uh, Northern California has two areas and Southern California has two areas. Our area, because our physical address is in Sacramento, we're considered Northern California. So I think Northern California goes all the way down to Fresno. And then from Fresno to a certain area that is still considered northern, and then south goes all the way down to Imperial and touches to San Diego.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments um from our board members? I just want to say yippee. I'm so, I'm so, I'm very thrilled. Um, and uh, this was a, a hu, this is a huge milestone, and I, I, I want to thank the faculty that sat around the table and um hammered things out and um all of the Calbright staff that were part of and party to this and our legal staff. Um, it, it's a job well done. And so again, thanks so much. Um, is there um uh, there's no other public discussion on this? Um, then we're going to go to six point two, which is the Calbright Faculty Association Report. And that's going to be done by Ashley Odell, if she's with us.
I'm here. Thank you.
Good. Hi, Ashley.
Good morning. Uh, good morning, President Haynes, Vice President Costa and members of the board. I am Ashley Odell, the president of the Calbright Faculty Association. And uh, I first of all wish to thank the board for approving the two MOUs ratified by the CFA last week, which is a fantastic first step in establishing the formalization of in, institutional support of faculty working conditions as we do our important work in ensuring the success of our students. So thank you. Another, another yay for me. Thank you so much, everybody. Um, so this is a major milestone for faculty and the college as a whole, which can only contribute to the success of the institution. I really want to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of both the CFA bargaining team and the Calbright administration representatives, both who spent significant time and effort laying the foundation for a collaborative approach, which will prove to be impactful as we engage in further bargaining. We look forward to continuing to work together as we move into the establishment of the full contract, which will include discussion of equ, an equitable salary schedule, working days and hours and working conditions, and lots and lots of other articles as well. I also want to share with you some changes in CFA leadership. Um, I'd like to welcome our new treasurer, Antoinette McGee from our counseling team and Cindy Kearney from Instruction, who will be acting as our new secretary. We previously had combined these two roles due to a lack of faculty numbers, so this is a positive change. Um, that's it for the CFA. A huge, huge things, but short to report. Uh, thank you again um, for your time and opportunity to report on these exciting changes, and thank you for approving our MOUs.
It was our pleasure. Thank you. You did the hard work.
And our team, you know, our team and the Calbright team, we're, we're very grateful.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't see any hands raised in terms of our trust and trustee questions or discussion. Um, so I am going to move um to a, a public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard at this time? Terry.
There are no questions or raised hands from the public.
Okay, well, in that case, um, yippee. Um, that's a formal statement. We, it is now eleven eighteen. Um, and it will allow our, our, our board members here to have a bit more time between its, the next meeting. Um, so I, um, it appears that the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete and we can adjourn, and I want to thank everyone for your participation.